Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. We have Chaplain John Heatley here from Life Spring Church, located at 13904 South 36th Street. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, members of the council, attendees, if you wish, please join me in prayer. Eternal Father, thank you for your providence, for your goodness, for your available wisdom. You are perfect, and we are not. We have room to improve, to improve our willingness to learn, to hear. God, help us to ask for your wisdom, your heart of mercy and compassion. Thank you for the faithful service of Paul Cook and his many years devoted to this city. As these elected officials make decisions and judgment, let them exercise their authority, knowing that you will also judge. Help these to look, to bless and protect those of our community. And I pray for this, in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you, Chaplain Heatley. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of consent agenda items. Councilman Casey.
Mayor, before the motion to approve, I'd like to remove item 12 claims from the consent agenda. And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns, removing item 12 from the consent agenda. Any questions? And to approve.
I don't think we need to remove the claims because that isn't part of this meeting. It's part after we come back. I don't believe we need to vote to remove the claims this time because that will come back after we adjourn. When we come back, sign and die, it'll be on that agenda. Am I right, Amy?
You're right.
Yes.
So do we need a motion to approve?
I think you can just withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the motion to remove item 12 from the consent agenda.
So it looks like we have two consent agenda items for this evening. The first is before the adjournment. The second is when we return for the new council. So the approval of the claims would be on that second piece of it. If you or another member of the council wants to make a motion to remove item 12, that would be when we re-adjourn.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda then, this time.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any questions now? Please vote.
I vote yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item six, we have notice of resignation for Kathy Welch, Ward four. So I need a motion to accept resignation of Kathy Welch as the Ward four representative. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kathy Welch.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Okay, any questions? Please vote.
I'll just abstain. Well, just abstain, yeah. So we have five yes votes and one abstaining, with Welch abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn, sign and die here, I want to just take a moment to recognize Council President Paul Cook and let some of the other members of the council say a few words if they so wish. But Paul has been on the council for 12 years now. Not sure, how many council presidents?
Six.
Six, so Paul has done a remarkable job as council president, I feel. He's kept us informed and always stayed in contact with the administration. But what I want to point out most, 12 years of public service here, another four years as county commissioner, working for items that pertain to Bellevue. So you got, that's 16 years just in that. You've got, obviously, retired police officers, so community service, Paul is just amazing. What he's done in his life so far, and I don't know what he's going to do next. I did talk to Anita, and she has a list, so you might look for that. But I've got a couple presentations here for you, but I want to give the other council members a moment if they have anything they want to say. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the representative that will be taking over for Paul Cook's ward, those are some tough truths to fill. Paul was always available for questions, an excellent leader, always called you back, had background information. I thought I was the queen of questions. I'm nobody compared to the questions that Paul asked. And he always asked the questions to make sure everything was very clear to all of us. So he's definitely going to be missed as one of our best leaders since I've served on the council for six years.
Councilman Burns?
I don't know if we're all just going in order here, but I do want to say that it really has been an honor working on the council with you, Paul. Not only that, yeah, I'll piggyback on what Mayor Hyke and Councilwoman Welch said. You are always available. You know, if I put in a phone call to you, you always get back to me. You do a good job at keeping everybody informed or talking to other council members about what you're thinking. And we'll also say that I really appreciate just your experience. That's really been helpful, especially to me. And I know I've told you this before, but, you know, sometimes if we're talking on the phone, you know, whether you know it, you've helped me make my mind up on something. Or sometimes when we are in a meeting and you are asking questions, sometimes you do change my mind. And sometimes you ask questions, and I wasn't even thinking of looking at it from that perspective. So I just always really appreciate all your input, and I appreciate what you've done for Sarpy County and what you've done for the city of Bellevue, and you will be missed.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council President Cook, for your years of service, not only here, but we knew each other from the South Omaha Environmental Task Force for years when you were at the Southeast Precinct and would attend those meetings where we were dealing with other messy issues. So for those who don't know, that was manure on the streets and odors and lots of things in South Omaha. That police background and the perspective you brought to those meetings was very helpful. And we got a lot accomplished and cleaned up a lot of things there. But you've also been equally dedicated here on the council as essentially somebody devoting your time to public service and to helping the community to grow. As the community you grew up in, you took it personally, you did the things because you believed in them. It wasn't self-interest, it was interest in how do we make the community a better place? And you looked at and did your homework on these things probably beyond what almost anybody would do. So I salute you for all of that service and for your dedication to making the world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCaw.
Mr. Cook. Now, you know what, growing up in Bellevue with the Cook family, I've known you most of my life. I appreciate everything, where you've come from, just how you've handled yourself the whole way through. The history that you bring, right? Sitting next to me and holding my hand as we went through some of these things and just coaching me along the way. So as a mentor to me in this role, thank you very much. I appreciate what you've done for the city, for the county, for the church, for all the things that you've done for Bellevue. So thank you very much, you'll be truly missed, and I'm still going to call you.
Thank you.
Councilman Casey.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, Paul, it goes without saying, you've pretty much been a fixture in this building. And I think I can speak for all the city council members that it just won't be the same not having Paul Cook sitting in this seat. And fortunately for the citizens of Bellevue, they will have benefited from the 12 years that you did sit in that seat. I know you've been an integral part of all the major positive things, and maybe some not so positive things that have happened in Bellevue. And you probably don't hear it from 99% of people, but I know they appreciate what you've done. When I think about the qualities that it takes to be a good and effective city council member, you possess every one of those traits, dedication, commitment, willingness to serve, willingness to compromise, communication skills, and God knows you love to talk. You really embody all of those things that I think, and without even knowing it, Paul, you've been a mentor to all of us, as already been said. So I'm not trying to upstage the mayor here, but on behalf of all the city council members, we'd like to make a small presentation to you and simply say thanks for your leadership and your friendship.
Thank you.
I'm going to give Paul a chance to talk to, just while the, I just want to acknowledge the Cook family, great support, amazing family in the city of Bellevue, and they, a lot of them have just contributed to our community. And this is what Bellevue is about. And thank you for being you as well and sharing your time, Paul, with us. So, Paul, I'll let you.
Well, thank you, first of all. It has been an honor to be here for 12 years. A lot of fun, a lot of good times, some crazy times, tough votes. But I want to thank the people that live in Bellevue. This is a good city council, they work well together. We've done a lot, especially the last six years. We've got great employees. I don't care where you work in the city, if you're a guy mowing grass or making repairs on the street or you're a director, everybody has always been very kind and polite if I've ever had to deal with them. And I think overall, we've got a good group of employees. This council works great together. Mayor, the things that we've done in the last, I want to say, six years have been great, unbelievable. A lot of good movement for the city. Jim Risto, I want to personally thank you. Whenever I've made a call, wanted a meeting, talked to you about something, you were always available, and that meant a lot. But this council is working together great. I was asked, what are some of the accomplishments that I think really were big while I was here? And I'd say probably the biggest thing is public safety. When I started here, we had a volunteer fire department. I think our chief and a couple senior people were full-time employees. But since then, we have our fire department that is 100% full-time employees. And obviously, then our calls for service response is outstanding. Our police chief, when he came here, we had, I think we were down about 20 officers. He's filled that gap, we're at authorized strength. And if you look at our crime stats over the last three, four, or five years, they have significantly dropped. And also, 36th Street is a big thing. I know it's crazy, but that 36th Street was supposed to be completed in 2012, 12 years ago. We got the first phase done, which is a beautiful street, and the second phase will be started, is actually in progress to go all the way down to Plattview Road. So it's been an honor. I'm going to miss everybody, but I think everybody up here and our directors and city employees that are here, this city is going in much better shape than 10, 12 years ago. We're doing a lot of good things, we're addressing a lot of issues, improvement issues throughout the city. And real quick, I just want to say, my wife's here. One, two, three, four sisters, two brothers, two sister-in-law, or sister-in-law and her brother-in-law. I'm one of 12, so. There's five, six, so thanks for being here.
Again, thank you, Council President Cook. We do have a couple things. I want to present you with a certificate of appreciation from me and the council. In grateful acknowledgement of 12 years of faithful and efficient service to the community, it is hereby resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, that this certificate of appreciation be awarded to Paul Cook. And it's witnessed by all of us on the council and city administrator, Jim Risto. And then also, I think we'll meet out, just if we can, the whole council can come out front and present him. We've got a clock, you've probably seen them before, to present Councilman Cook as well. And I'm going to adjourn, sign and die, and we'll come back and meet shortly as a new council. Wasn't on my notes, but do I have a motion to adjourn, sign and die?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
So, clock, given to Councilman Paul Cook, thank you for your 12 years of dedicated service to the city of Bellevue. Jim, I'm going to have you come out here too, if you don't mind, rather than just be in the back room. Yeah, you want to be in the picture. You're good, anybody else want to come up and get a picture?
Thank you.
And then before you leave, I want to have your family come up and take a picture with you too, because it'd be easier to do it now. All right, thanks for bearing with us. Coming out of our signed eye, we are on number eight now. Am I good? All right. So eight is administering the oath of office for elected Bellevue City Council members by Judge Colin Palm. And I'll ask the Honorable Palm to the podium to administer the oath of office and ask Thomas Burns, Kathy Welch, Thomas Burns, Ward one, Kathy Welch, Ward three, and Don Preister, Ward five, to face the podium for administration of the oath. So if y'all.
Thank you, Mayor, and if you'd come forward and stand in front of me, and we'll administer it as a group. Thank you, and if everyone would raise their right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of city council member.
Perform the duties of the office of city council member.
Of the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska.
Of the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member.
Nor am I a member.
Of any political party or organization that advocates.
Any political party or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time as I am in this position.
And during such time that I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of any political party or organization.
Nor become a member of any party or political organization.
That advocates.
That advocates.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or this state.
Or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll have the council members, newly sworn council members, sign their oaths, and we're going to recess just for a little shorter break again. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 11, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. 11A, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an ask risk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Mayor, this probably won't be a surprise, but I'd like to remove item 12 from the consent agenda. And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. To remove item 12 and approve the consent agenda. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. So we have item 12, approval of the claims, was removed. I think we're removing an item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to remove item Swain Construction from the claims.
Second.
So we've got a motion by Casey, seconded by Preister, to remove the claim from Swain Construction. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Did we get a second on the motion? Did I miss it? Oh, sorry. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 13, we do not have any, oh, sorry, we, yep. So do we have a motion to approve? The claims, as amended? Councilman Casey.
Motion to approve the claims as amended.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Okay, I'm going to do it verbally. Casey.
Yes.
McCaw.
Yes.
Preister.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
And Welch.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 13, no special presentations this evening. Item 14, organizational matters. 14B, election of the city council president for 2025. And I am going to ask for, is there any nominations on the floor? Councilman McCaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Rich Casey for president.
Second.
So we got a motion to nominate by McCaw, seconded by Burns, for Rich Casey. Are there any others? Okay. Again, motion by McCaw, seconded by Burns, to elect Councilman Casey as the 2025 council president. Please vote.
A second here, I kicked myself out of the meeting. Yeah, go ahead. I'll surely take the vote. Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
Councilman Casey.
Yes.
Councilman Burns.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried.
Alright, thank you. Council, congratulations, Council President Casey.
Thanks Mayor, I thank you, uh, thanks for your vote of confidence. I look forward to accepting and fulfilling the responsibility of the president, so thank you.
You've got big shoes to fill.
Yes, I do, thank you. Thanks for the reminder.
Alright, uh, item fifteen, we did not receive any, uh, citizen communication requests. Um, item sixteen liquor licenses, sixteen A. Recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of an addition to the current Class C liquor license for John James with Tight Cuts Barber and Beauty LLC doing business as Tight Cuts Barber and Beauty at thirteen oh eight North, or Fort Creek Road South. And I'll open up, uh, sixteen A for public hearing. Is there anyone here to, uh, speak regarding sixteen A? Please come forward and the applicant is here.
Yes, sir.
So if you just stay for questions, or if you wanna say anything, you're free to say.
I don't know, thank you for letting me come up here to talk and whatnot and stuff, but yeah, we're just trying to, uh, I mean, the gentleman that just left, he's, his shoes are big, so I'm like, man, that guy's a great guy. But, um, I wanted to say, yeah, we're just trying to do an addition, so like, we have a liquor license, but there's a space that, there's a hallway right there to where it doesn't make sense to not have that space to where we have this, the liquor licenses there, so that's why I put the motion in for.
How long have you had the liquor license?
Uh, three years.
So we approved it three years ago.
Yep, three years ago, yes, sir.
Working out well?
Happen, well, the, the whole reason for it was when COVID hit, I was trying to find something to supplement to make so that we could stay afloat. And, um, it's not as what I thought it was gonna be, but, but it works.
But it adds, okay, good.
Yep.
Alright. Uh, Councilman Preister?
Yes, sir.
The mayor kind of asked what I was going to, but we approved the license, you said three years ago, and I remember when you were here.
Yes, sir.
And it seemed unusual to have a barber shop where you're serving alcohol.
Right.
I would take it that while you're cutting, you're not imbibing.
No, 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 not at all.
But
No, sir.
I, I'm just wondering what the response has been from your customers and uh, you said that they don't use it that much, but usually they don't s- sit there too long, but I'm, I'm just curious how it has been in, uh, a hair salon barber shop.
Okay, so let me just tell you, so we were like, um, I was thinking outside the box. And so once I went to, uh, Lincoln, so it took me a while, I went back and forth for almost a year to try to get the paperwork filled out because I didn't wanna have to pay for it more times, because if you don't fill it out right, then you have to pay again to do it all over. So, but the, it's, it's good because some customers like it. Some cus- customers are like, okay, yeah, this is cool, but some customers, they just, you know, it's just something extra to have, you know what I mean? So, so it's good, but no, none of us drink or nothing like that as far as when we're cutting services or nothing like that, that's you know, that wouldn't work out.
That's what I was thinking. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mister James, could we make sure to have you sign the sheet up there for us? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm nervous too, I know my voice is shaky, yeah.
If you just state, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is John James. Uh, thirteen oh eight South Fort Creek Road, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight zero zero five.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the public hearing is open, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding sixteen A? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding sixteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I'd be honored to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of an addition to the current C, Class C liquor license for John James with Tight Cuts Barber and Beauty LLC doing business as Tight Cuts Barber and Beauty at thirteen oh eight Fort Creek Road South.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Are there any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control the approval of an addition to the current Class D liquor license for Brian with A Y Industries LLC doing business as Liquor Cabinet at one zero zero three Galvin Road South. And I'll open up sixteen B for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak?
Mayor Haake.
Yep.
Uh, we got an email, uh, this afternoon stating, um, he was gonna be here, but he became sick, so there will be no one here tonight.
Okay.
From them.
And they don't have to be, but we always ask that they come just in case there's a question, so. Um, is there anyone else that wants to speak regarding sixteen B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you Mayor, I'll make a motion to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control uh, the approval of, of an addition to the current Class D liquor license for Brian with A Y Industries LLC doing business as Liquor Cabinet at ten oh three Galvin Road South.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eighteen, or item seventeen ordinances for adoption third reading, we have none this evening. Item eighteen ordinances for public hearing second reading. Eighteen A ordinance number four one six nine, amending chapter nineteen of the city code by adding a new article nine sections nineteen dash one oh eight to nineteen dash one twenty regarding vacant property registration. And I'll open up eighteen A for public hearing. If there's anyone wanting to speak regarding that, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding eighteen A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
We don't have a motion, we move it to the third reading. Put that second reading right there.
Oh, yeah. I'm just, uh, following the paperwork. So, no other questions, uh, we will, um.
Mayor.
Councilman Preister.
Point of clarification, we did carry this forward. I don't know if the motion was to just carry it forward and have a second public hearing? Or if it was to keep it on second reading and then have a third reading later? But I think we can do it either way, there's no rush. I just don't remember how we did it.
Ours was to, to move it to the sec- for a second hearing because there were some modifications to it from the last. So with those modifications being done now and with your ability and, and if the public was to look at it tonight would be that night, so then we'd take it to the third, which would be the next council meeting.
Good. Gives it the extra step and public can be engaged should they choose to be, okay? And I wanna thank Councilman Casey for his work and going through it and Councilman Cook also looking it over and making sure that some things were done in the best interest of the citizens, so, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So, public reading, or public hearing is closed and that'll be, uh, third reading will be December seventh, thirteenth here in the council chambers. Item nineteen ordinances for introduction first reading nineteen A ordinance number four one seven zero request to rezone lots one and two Perez addition replat two being a replat of lot one Perez addition replat one and lot four Perez addition from R E dash P S and R E to R E dash P S and R E for the purpose of single family residential development. Applicant Jonathan Rivas, general location one oh seven one one, Old Thirty Sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one seven zero, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by article three of ordinance number four one four six by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one zero seven one one, Old Thirty Sixth Street. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be December seventeenth two thousand twenty-four at six PM here in the council chambers. Item nineteen B ordinance number four one seven one and ordinance to amend chapter nineteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending nineteen dash twenty-three and nineteen dash forty-two regarding request for hearing for nuisance violations. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one seven one, an ordinance to amend chapter nineteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending sections nineteen dash twenty-three and nineteen dash forty-two regarding request for hearing for nuisance violations and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at six PM here in the council chambers. Item nineteen C ordinance number four one seven two, an ordinance to amend chapter twenty-nine point five of Bellevue Municipal Code by amending section twenty-nine point five through nine twenty-nine point five dash ten and twenty-nine dot fi- dot five dash twenty-eight regarding request for hearing from nuisance violations. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one seven two, an ordinance to amend chapter twenty-nine point five of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending sections twenty-nine point five through nine, twenty-nine point five through ten and twenty-nine point five dash twenty-eight regarding request for hearing for nuisance violations and to provide an effective date.
Second reading and public hearing will be December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at six PM. Item twenty, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Twenty A, approve the event application for Bellevue Community Foundation for Annual Christmas in Old Town on Saturday December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four from four PM to eight PM in Old Town on Mission Avenue and Franklin Street by Washington Park and to waive the fifty dollar application fee. I'll open twenty A up for public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding twenty A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you Mayor, make a motion to approve item twenty A.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Twenty B, public hearing to obtain citizen input on the C D B G two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation and Report. Um, I'll open twenty B up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak? Regarding twenty B, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding twenty B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Item twenty-one, resolutions. Twenty-one A, resolution number two zero two four dash three four authorizing the submission of the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program Year. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you Mister Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two four dash three four.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you Mister Mayor, just wanna say what a great job Abby does for us. Uh, we're just honored to have her be part of it, and I know they do a lot of great things for our city, so, thanks again Abby.
Councilman Prester.
Thank you Mayor, I just wanna highlight too, this is a somewhat tech, thi- this is just the authorization, but the prior one. It's pretty technical, there's a lot of detail, a lot of information that has to be provided. It is federal money that we get and we have a wonderful program to put this to good use. It's all low income based and we've done an excellent job, but it takes a citizen group who serves on the task force, the committee, and it takes leadership. So from the finance department, from Abby Highland especially, and for all those volunteers. It's a great job, it's great for our city, and essentially this will be over a half a million dollars that is good input into parts of the city that can really use it. So, thanks to everybody involved.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Alright, motion by Welch, seconded by Preister, please vote.
Did yours go through Kathy?
I vote yes.
They're all spinning. Well, everyone's come through except for Councilwoman Welch's. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two, current business. Twenty-two A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the HUD Form seventy fifteen dot fifteen request for release of funds and certifications and submit to HUD. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty-two A.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two B, approve final payment application in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Approve final change order in the amount of eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars and eighty cents. Approve the project as, as substantially complete and accept final project quantities. Closing of two thousand twenty-four concrete project with Swain Construction. Do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw.
Make a motion, we approve twenty-two B.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two C, approve final payment application in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. Approve the project as substantially complete and accept final project quantities. Closing of twenty twenty-four restrooms at Stonecroft Park with Midwest D C M. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item twenty-two C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two D, approve final payment application in the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Approve the project as substantially complete and accept final project quantities, closing of twenty twenty-four restrooms at Washington Park with Midwest D C M. Do I have a motion? Councilman Prester.
Thank you Mayor, I'll move to approve item twenty-two D.
Second.
Motion by Prester, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with H D R Engineering Inc. for professional services for Twin Creek siphon stabilization in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Prester.
Thank you Mayor, I'll move to approve item twenty-two E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Prester, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city of Bellevue and Pride Home Maintenance Services, Inc. Not to ex- exceed sixty thousand dollars for the Hayworth Park ballfields renovations. Do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw.
Make a motion, we approve twenty-two F.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, seconded by Burns. Motion by McCaw, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two G, approve the purchase of a Miller P K G X M T three fifty C C slash C V M I G R U N welder and accessories from Matheson Welding Supply, not to exceed an amount of twelve thousand two hundred and four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Motion to approve item twenty-two G.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Prester. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the second extension to the Real Estate Broker Services Agreement with C B R E, Inc. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty-two H.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
It disappeared, Susan.
It left? Let's try it again. Did it work? All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for hanging out through the very end of this meeting. Item twenty-three, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly report is given at the first council meeting of each month. Reports will be attached, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, with the council package. Any questions? All right, uh, those will be filed. Item twenty-four, we have no closed session. Twenty-five is a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.